traders welcome back to another relentless recap after tuning in hit that thumbs up button and of course if you are new viewer consider subscribing to the channel guys this one is going to be short and sweet just a few stocks to go over and talk about here we're gonna start off with s n t g this was the stock of the day very impressive move pre-market it gave a nice opportunity around 7am but then pulled back and you know very similar to Friday right well we have a bit of an imbalance you know coming into the open right a stock that's pulled back from a very high point a lot of the times we're expecting a bit of a bounce and this one did more than bounce as it made a new high over the pre-market highs pushing up to nine sixty-three right I believe pre-market highs around seven sixty-four so this thing started off with a very very nice red to green and you know I had an issue today where I just for the life of me could not be in the right position to capture the front side of the opportunity right earlier in the morning and so s n t g and some of the other stocks we would have these nice red to greens you know I might be watching something else and it doesn't take a lot of time you'll see here you know this is just one candle one minute on the one minute timeframe right high of day you know up here around at the time you know three seventy-five so this is slowly inching up and then erupts I've already missed it I come on the resumption and it's choppy here you know it's down we don't quite get a dip and rip like we would want it and so I start off by losing I think five hundred dollars on this stock and let's jump into the archives today we'll show some archives five hundred dollar red trade guys to start the day and what was one of my main focus into the open hey let's try not to have a deep red start you know so likewise in Friday you know we're gonna be deep into the red so let's fast forward here and you know what I think I'll show a lot of today's lives recording right cuz I wanna go over a little bit more of how we we were able to make back some of the money so here we're halted up you know and watch the resumption here let's see I believe it might have been a false halt actually was it a false halt okay so four ten false halt I put up two thousand shares I'm like okay I'm gonna watch and you know can we see a pullback it's gonna go higher and it's gonna go all the way to four thirty-eight right here so again guys hit that thumbs up hit that thumbs up there's thirty-eight on the ask quickly briefly and it's gonna pull back here to four this is where I'm gonna take the long you know in hindsight I should have waited for a little bit more of a pullback and it's lingering up here so I was thinking okay it's doing alright but can we still see that pullback so there's four oh five and it quickly snaps back to sixteen on the bits twenty-two hundred bits there's four or five again there's four there's four I thought it was holding and I'm in it doesn't flush immediately but right there you know as the bitch try to get back above the level it comes down some more and I'm out for a losing trade guys sometimes it's the small things right if you anticipate the pullback to be a little bit bigger and the analysis is a little bit better this is a this is a potential winning trade instead right and look at the spreads you know I mean this document guys today was a very volatile day man you know you really have to be precise you really have to be accurate you have to thread the needle nicely to get a good green day you know two by sixteen you don't wanna be marketing in in an area like this cuz you could potentially get filled on the ass alright so you gotta wait for the spreads to tighten up in the areas as you're going in right buying into the weakness to try and get those better fills but four dollars is not the area that we're gonna hold and so we have seventy-five and it bounces back on the bits to I believe ninety-five and I believe it might have even gotten back to four yeah right here got back to four so if you're in here you know if it it just comes down to the analysis if I'm in at eighty or seventy let's say eighty you know maybe I'm not in a seventy-five at the very lowest of that dip which was seventy-three but if I'm in eighty you know here we go twenty cents four hundred dollar winner instead of being down five hundred huge swing and turnaround right there huge difference huge difference so that wasn't good and from there I realized okay this thing is a little choppy you know it it tries to go but ultimately has a hard time right here and so yeah that happened Q H another stock that was very disappointing because this thing just you know took off like there there was nobody's business right so you know I'm watching the pivot around sixty-five I could have done a better job here holding longer but for the quick scalp trades that I was looking for in the moment just didn't quite get to connect and this reminds me so much of Friday so there's a small seller there's a small seller at seventy you can see that I'm trying to buy into that volume spike you know image immediately flushes down and so right here I started to tell myself okay relentless you gotta be a little bit more patient right why well you know I did have some technical difficulties with Das and I missed the first couple of candles so I didn't quite know how the price action was you know are we tight spreads are we not so I didn't have all the intel I would have wanted so after that loss I'm like okay this thing has some downside range let's be patient here let's try and get a better trade and you know I'm watching I'm watching and this thing is just gonna go without me right here man so there's seventy-one you know it's inching up it's inching up it's trying there's seventy sixty-six hundred bits you know it's trying and we're gonna eventually get that nice pull away through seventy so you know right in this area here you know I needed to be paying more attention I needed to be more assertive let's say uh once we started to once we got above seventy-one once we got above seventy-one I needed to be paying a little bit more attention right here to get long and again you know easing off because of the loss which wasn't good so right here in this area here watch the bids how are we doing there's set sixty-seven seventy okay this is good enough this is good enough right and right there you know instead of being in seventy-five and watching for that bigger move I'm being a little too passive and you see how it starts to open up we ripped to eighty-eight right here I'm hoping for a pullback anything below seventy-five I'll take right here that's not gonna happen that is not gonna happen there's ninety-two and in my head I start thinking man oh my goodness like are you kidding me and I start to feel you know I start to feel like I'm missing the trades now if I'm in at seventy like I should have been selling let's say eighty eighty-five I'm much more confident to take the stock higher but now that I had a loss didn't and then I missed an entry it's the very fine difference of being in the driver's seat being in control versus you know being one step behind and being behind the ball my aim today was to build a small cushion and immediately size of the moment something looked good but being that I missed and and the cushion would have literally the cushion doesn't have to be anything crazy for me the cushion is more so connecting on trades rather than P and L right show some consistencies is how I should probably say it right prove some consistency to yourself and then go full size immediately once you're connected to the stock and yeah right here I you know and then when I saw that in on the inside it kills you man it kills me because I know how close I could have been to easily being in control of taking all those trades so I'm not taking break of four because I feel like I kind of missed the train and these are entries I usually would wanna be in and aggressively taking nice green coming in nice green and then rips through four immediately four ten four twenty four thirty even you know four thirty-one for the highest does not get better than that so that's essentially how my day started you know um taking the losing trade and I think becoming a little too timid despite the loss being small and that's exactly why we're even starting off with this smaller size because it's a matter of just connecting connect 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 you know eighty bucks is nothing here but I let that discourage me and you know again you know I don't want I don't like to have excuses but missing out the price action for the minutes that I was trying to get the law logged in was an issue because I need to know how the stock is moving you know is it spready is it not like what type of stock is this so you know things happen but you gotta stay focused which I I'm glad I did because you know as we saw we had the red trades on the other stock and at one point we're down I think seven hundred here we're down like seven hundred on s n t g one point man which was not good and you know after this resumption here this thing is gonna resume I think it let's see so we were down seventy-nine we were down seventy-nine so we took a trade somewhere very high up let's see halt at thirty-one false halt false halt eleven 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 five okay great great cuz I'm about to say why did I not take eleven I did ten alright can we see the curl this is a decent trade smaller size fifteen cents we're taking it off the table you know whenever I something that I maybe have to be better at is when I see the halt level so close I tend not to buy like if if you know high of days at thirty-one here if the halt level is at sixty I take high of day when you know feeling more comfortable but for some reason when the hall levels like in proximity I tend to just ease off when I shouldn't be doing that right because if we're gonna hold twenty on the bids thirty here is an entry and there's twenty cents over thirty to fifty I mean I hope tomorrow's it we get at least you know the same type of volatility Friday was like this today is like this and this guys this hot market if you ask me has been going on since December last year and I felt like the market has been in a great place since December we've had our laws in between you know you know the banking crisis came small caps kind of got soft but yeah so resumption four fifty-two where are we so four fifty-two here we go a couple seconds to resumption and it's it's rewarding for people holding into the halls right look at this four ninety rips can we get a dip it's not dipping I realized it's not dipping here and this is a very high 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 higher risk trade right so watch this again this is high risk opens up at four ninety it rips to a hype twenty-five it pulls back to the halt level of four ninety so we got eighty-seven by ninety-four and you can see there's a spread and my reaction time here needed some work look at how late I am and 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 part of why I'm not buying into the level is that I'm not as confident right here at this moment in time on the day I'm red on the other stock I haven't connected on this stock I haven't connected on this first move and so I'm not buying into the weakness as with as much confidence as I needed to so if the spreads didn't come back down here I'd have gotten filled the high trying to buy five in at five twenty and I mean also you know the stocks are flying this is volatile stuff here so the moment I'm trying to get long look at the spreads here and I think I got a fortunate fill if I'm not mistaken twelve yes I got a very fortunate fill in between the spreads so I'm gonna take it off here above twenty and you can see nine by seventeen it's still spready this might have been a scratch trade yeah that was a scratch trade and did I get back in no I did not this one was tricky right here so it dipped dips to ninety again but this time it's gonna come down some more it's still holding it's trying this is good it's come to this to that level twice and held up that's that's strength right there but it's risky but it's strength so this time can we go through fifty so if you're not confident in your step behind it becomes that much more difficult cuz then now you're missing all the trades you should be taking and your step behind this is the third time now at ninety the third time usually a little weaker how is it gonna do here it does break below I like it cuz it's a soft break but how did we do I'm out scratches there's a lot of red hitting the tape I think this was a losing trade here yep it was so it flushed down and the spreads you know it's such a volatile day I mean you know okay not a bad trade I'd say it comes back to the level again or holding above and the moment we start to flush I'm like uh uh this can flush down all the way to you know four dollars let's say five dollars right look for four dollars somebody nope I'm gonna cut that for a loss it immediately bounces back up as someone puts a huge bid back here at seventy-five so I'm out and then this person is so aggressive they're even walking up the bid trying to get filled this is timing right here if this order it's sometimes you know sometimes you also need things to work out in your favor you know in in the randomness of it all right you know sometimes you want the randomness to fall on your side uh because if the buyer is a little earlier and if they do come at ninety I'm already in it you know eighty-nine if they come or even if they they come at seventy-five and I see it it's a good sign especially if they come at ninety you know it encourages me to hold and even add alright so this wasn't good that it flushes down the spreads open up it doesn't really flush the spread just kind of open up and I'm like yep when there's a flush happening that's how the level two usually will look so I'm like yeah I'm out of here I'm selling in the spreads and the buyer walks up the ladder to four ninety they get filled how well are we going to hold so I see it and I like that we didn't break down by a lot so I get back involved here and I think right here is where I needed to hold this thing and I didn't let's see I needed to hold it a little longer here and I took it off early I took it off early this wasn't good I believe this got all the way to five fifty here or did or or maybe not I can't remember let me see this loss again so good decent trade there too early on this buy but you know it does hold up above the level well eight it doesn't hold above eight and once it comes down but well what was that I did not click on the I did not click on the screen there trying to get back to where I was so in at eighty-nine there's the flush there's the bid it breaks below the bid it's soft so I like it the lows are sixty-five high of days at five forty get back in was that like an eight cent loss but it's holding here though you know what is it gonna be maybe I need to get it back around seventy-five where that buyer showed up there's sixty fifty-five green sixty-five an area to watch here if not maybe it goes a little lower so was this backside already I think this might have been backside let's see yeah this was already backside so this one yeah this one didn't last long I forgot this one did not last long so once that move was over that was it so if you didn't get green in at least two halls going up day over day finished on this stock maybe some people might have gotten a couple of the bottoming wicks here or maybe a bounce here but yeah so next stock N N O X this one I'm gonna get completely obliterated let's see I don't usually go through all my recording like this but today was one of those type of days and I'm like ah I just could not connect for the life of me so here we go we're halted at ten seventy-four do I need to skip ahead well it was like one second left geez okay ten seventy-four and here it is good resumption pullback how low is it gonna go you see it's not dipping and this is another one where we didn't quite get the dip so I tried to take it in that hesitation but but I didn't hold it long enough these are high risk trades guys I'm not gonna lie these are high 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 risk trades you you can easily lose a ton of money you know but I'm I'm trying to be aggressive I'm trying to be aggressive I needed to give this more time I didn't give it a chance because again man that what you I mean I'm all these trades I'm taking based off of previous stocks in this type of price range with this type of move and the move is usually like almost instant and the tape is usually just buying and so I'm in I you know all that hesitation right there I'm like okay you know maybe not but I didn't give enough give it enough of a chance ultimately hindsight I needed to hold this for at least five to ten seconds it's a decent entry here great entry we're out within a half a second or two and here's the move another you know five ten seconds later sixty-eight and is it gonna continue so we got all the way to sixty-eight unbelievable this should have been a nice winning trade it dipped down nicely too like if you watch it also watch this dip here right so once once I'm in watch the move watch the move watch this sixty-eight watch the pullback here once it does decide to pull back twenties eighteen but you have to be quick to get that type of entry man I mean if you're putting out even an offset or a limit good luck right where did we go long seventeen eighteen twenty let's say twenty area where does it pull back twenty area and it does bounce back up pretty quickly here to forty fifty so that was a quick micro dip I mean you have to be so fast the second time are we gonna hold hmm it's trying you can see it's getting a little weaker though relentless trader was gonna watch for a bigger pullback as it's gonna get caught somewhere here did I aim for eleven soft breakdown not good okay break below ten break below eleven psychological support and resistance is good the fact that it breaks down and it doesn't flush down hard right here not bad right where's that right there ninety-five but the moment I see that this is me being like a slug here if I'm gonna watch for that the moment I see that the moment I see that I need to be be watching to be in the stock ninety-five I should have already been in I should have already been in you see how long that was that's not the broker that's me that is completely me there was more than enough time to be in between eleven and eleven ten so this is the issue not being as confident on the day not trusting the entries as much as I needed to and that in itself you know we talk about making ten fifteen twenty thirty cents on a trade you know to be able to get the margins you want you gotta be fast so I'm in way too high I'm in way too high right there way too high way too high so what should be either a scratch trade or a winning trade becomes a losing trade you know if we're in let's say eight at worst case scenario right here it's a scratch trade and I think this gave out right here if I'm not mistaken so we're down ninety-nine that should have just been a scratch trade instead of a losing trade you know it's like these things can be avoided and that that one faded faded out from there so we had three candles three green candles and if you guys recall on the other one right here you know three green candles three minutes of of hot price action and then Titanic you know Titanic on the backside so s n t g again you know if we come to the left hand side of the screen I mean cheese Louise man cheese Louise cheese Louise we had some nice trades in here so we're in this is one of the better dips that I had so it pulls back it pulls back here to uh you know it was holding five seventy at this blue trend line from a daily level but it breaks below for a split second here and it comes down or let's say you know for a couple seconds and it comes down to fifty and this was one of my better trades in this area so I'm eventually long fifty I sell half it curls up seventy-seven and right here we got a good string of trades but I was never consistent enough like you know back to back to back to feel confident to increase size because for me to use big size I gotta feel like I'm in control I never felt like I was in control uh and you know I just like you know I'm gonna just stick to my starter size here of one K and and that's what I did so it it's holding this area here I think I went but did I go back red here it's holding this area here cuz we just had lows and technically from the entry I just took at five like this is some of the difference I believe if I'm trading with commissions if I'm trading with a commission broker that entry that I took at fifty five fifty I'd still be holding versus taking it off and uh getting back in again because ultimately the breakout has not happened yet but I felt like hey being in at fifty and the stock is now at eighty eighty-five you know what is that twenty-five cents thirty cents of gains you know I'm usually looking for five to ten cents so it's so hard to not take thirty cents when I have it but at the end of the day you know we're watching for the stock to go back to six twenty six fifty at the heist so you know we'll fast forward a little bit for time um but we connect nicely here so again we're watching for six fifty so I could have still been holding that same trade but I'm gonna buy right here as the volume starts to pick up a little bit I'm gonna say okay time to go long so I'm in at eighty-five great fill it rips up to twenty beautiful trade how well are we gonna hold this level it's holding so I'm back in here's a beautiful move it rips up to forty I think I'm out at thirty-four right there was the fill that I I think I got and I thought it was gonna go crazy here so I'm like I'm gonna get back in again and watch for the move now through six fifty so I'm in eleven there's forty by forty-six so the goal right here is for me to be selling into high of day and I'm gonna try and put out the order and try and get fills above fifty but look at how volatile it is it's already coming down it's already coming down we're not even seeing a lot of red yet it's already coming down now look at that six oh six on the bids can I I'm gonna try and catch that can I catch that six oh six on the bids boom we're in here's the move six oh six by thirty-seven and this is why the market orders are dangerous because if if I was a little late to sell trust guys if I was a little late to sell let's say now hit the sell button they would have filled me at six oh six and how terrible is that to see that you're up forty cents unrealized for split second and now you've made nothing in the trade I mean you know we'd love the stocks to hold up a little bit better in this type of situation but you know it is what it is but man but we got thirty-four coming out which was good so that put us back into the green but you know right here where I thought quick dip down for retest it needed that bigger pullback and so did this come back to seventy it might have came back all the way to seventy seventy-five so analysis my analysis is off and this is gonna be a poor trade right here because again where did we just have support fifty or very lows and then seventy so remember seventy was support before we had the new lows where's the stock likely to pull back now that we just made it essentially a high of day attempt seventy it's either seventy or fifty but likely seventy right so instead of buying sixteen right here and and it comes down to just not being as focused and dialed in as you need to be like you know you overlook the small details like sixteen right there was nonsense I should have already realized it needed to pull back again because it would have went it's one of two things it's either it's going or it's not right sometimes you get the consolidation but in this type of buildup here so right here even if you take eighty you can take eighty stop at seventy and then if it goes to fifty you could take fifty stop at forty or stop at thirty whatever and watch for the same hype they can move again so there's seventy-five that's the entry right there so let's see if we took seventy how this looks here thirty seconds later let's see how we're gonna be doing so thirty seconds later okay we're still lingering another thirty second oh well look it looks like it came down so there's a stop again if you're in a seventy seven let's say seventy-eight stop at seventy or right below that level sixty-five you know fourteen cent risk for that curl if it doesn't if it doesn't You know, fourteen cent risk for that curl, if it doesn't, if it doesn't hold, we might need to see fifty. And that's alright, if we if we take the loss right there, perfectly fine. Now, how are we gonna do at fifty five, and you know, at this time, I just, I, you know, I think swim. There is an issue with refreshing the chart where it doesn't show the full volume on the candlesticks. I looked down at my five minute chart, didn't think I needed to refresh, and it was showing me high of the volume way higher than what it actually was. And I think it, it, you know, it, part of it did lead to me not being as confident with this trade here. Um, but you know, and through throughout the life stream, I was saying, I think the more aggressive traders will take it here, I'm not as confident, part of that was because of that volume. But I also didn't like that we rejected high of day, which could have potential been a, which if, which could have potentially been another double top, alright? So it came down, and this is gonna curl all the way back up, man. When I, I I already watched this back, I was disappointed right here. For not taking the break of five sixty and the break of five seventy. I did not take these two entries here, watch this, right here, five seventy. This area, I should have been throwing out some small size thousand shares, let's see what this thing does, it's ramping back up. Especially in a dip right there to fifty eight, can I be in at sixty? You know, right here, sixty, can I be in right here on the bids at sixty? That was an area to potentially watch, and you know, I could have put my stop at the lows and just set it and forget it. It's gonna go crazy here. Crazy, oh, maybe we do, we don't skip. But anyhow, it's break of six. And there we go, it's finally over the level, I'm gonna try and take a few scalp trades, there's twenty five. Selling in the spreads. That was late. Or poor Phil. We didn't quite get the pull away, I probably needed to to hold a little longer there, but okay, it is a little higher up, so not not bad, decent trades. Where's that big breakout that we had? So I'll skip ahead a little bit more. I think break of thirty, I didn't touch it, and this is where it went. I think right here, it's gonna go crazy. Twenty one. Twenty one. Sixteen, sixteen, fifteen, twelve, okay, maybe, oh, oh, skip, skip ahead a little too much. Yeah, this thing went, I took a two, I I think I took a trade somewhere here. Or was it earlier in the candle? Goodness, I know, watching back at this stuff, it's like, I, what I what I can't understand is why I didn't buy back. I know I took a trade on this candle somewhere. Okay, so right, okay, so this is the, okay. Let's, let's, let's watch this back. So high of days at six fifty, six thirty is the trigger, I'm in thirty eight right there. I'm gonna be back out, are we holding? If we are, I'm gonna be back in. I'm back in thirty one, great fill. Where's the move through fifty? Not happening, there's twenty on the bids, I'm back out. That is what I needed to do, and you see how I didn't really lose much right there, fair, fair risk management, selling quickly. Right as the selling pressure coming in, getting a decent fill coming out. But when it comes back up again, I don't attempt it. And oh man, oh man. Man, oh man, so from down six hun, I was down seven hundred, now green six hundred on the stock. At this point, we're actually green, you know, maybe like three hundred on the day. Time, this is one long recap, thirty four minutes, it's the study session though. Should have been back in, where's the entry that I just took, if I took, if I took the same entry. You know, and you can see right here, when I'm, when I am in, you know, I'm trying to give it a chance to go, but you know, we don't go. And so we end up selling as it came down. If we have the same energy, right here, at thirty one forty, right here, from the thirty two. You know, are we gonna hold this time? Boom, you you, you know, you get, you you get that extra. You know, instead of you selling for fifty, which is what the target was. You're in at thirty, you're selling at eighty, fifty cents, instead of twenty cents, sixty cent, or is that sixty cents? Fifty sixty cent move. If you're selling half, or you're just gonna say, hey, I'm gonna just sell all, whatever it is, you can't complain, and then boom. Seven eighteen for potential halt. I I, you know, watching this back, I don't know why I didn't buy back right there, I don't know what possessed me, in fact, you know what? I think I know what it is. I got a little chatty, I also looked down at my five minute volume profile, I think. I wanna believe I saw like eighteen, and then I looked back, it's at forty. I missed the the information in between eighteen and forty, uh, something like that, something like that. Not 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 like that I'm trying to make an excuse or anything like that, but, yeah, you know, sometimes that happens, you look away for a little bit and then. You know, you miss the move. We ended up giving back a little bit, we dropped down to four hundred. And, uh, we finished the day, you know, we 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 had a small trade in here, that brought us back, you know, like a hundred dollars, twenty cents. Two, three trades, and then we lost on M G I H, green one twenty, so it was actually green on the day. Uh, I think we were with a five thirty, uh, green trade on that stock. I think we were green on the day like. Three eighty, maybe even four hundred. Then, you know, we added another hundred, maybe, let's say three eighty, like three eighty, or three, let's say three fifty, we added another hundred. And like twenty, and then we lost it back on this thing. Trying to buy the dip, and the dip just keeps on dipping, keeps on dipping, keeps on dipping, keeps on dipping. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. The depths. And such a nice move up, you know, I I I really thought the two hundred E M A area here was gonna hold, it didn't. And, uh. Yeah, from green one twenty to red one fifty, I should have stopped, I was down nine dollars, I told my, I told myself, ah, you should probably stop it here, but I'm like, man, it looks so good, I'm just gonna trade it because it looks so good. But then the five minute candle is red, and redder and redder, the volume profile looked good, but still never bounced. And so instead of finishing up like four fifty, here we are at one seventy. Not, not an appropriate P and L for this type of day, you know, we should be up one thousand minimum, minimum. Man, tomorrow, tomorrow will come again, and tomorrow will be a little bit faster, a little bit quicker. And I need to avoid the red start, man, if I avoid the red start, I'm not gonna be as timid, and you know, even if I do start red. You gotta keep the same intensity. Gotta keep the same intensity, we're s- we're using that smaller size for a reason, we cannot, it is near impossible. For us to hurt ourselves with a thousand shares on these stocks. It is near impossible. Okay, three thousand, you add two, three times, you're at nine K, the stock drops eighty cents. Boom, we're down seven grand, eight grand. With a thousand shares, even though it goes down a dollar share, who cares, so it's like, I need to just stay dialed in, not ease off. Now I think, with that being said, you know, we can have a nice day tomorrow, assuming the momentum is is volatile. But you know, it it is great to still be green, uh, but you know, this is not gonna cut it here, one seventy. Uh, it it's like, it feels like a scratch trade really, you know, and it is, on some of the trades, that's just the amount we're making and we're losing. So we gotta be a little more consistent, accuracy at forty six percent, not great, we gotta be better. Alright, so take it easy, guys, stay safe, stay green, it's been a while since we had a forty minute recap, this is one of those, oh gee, recaps. So hit the thumbs up and subscribe, tomorrow we'll be back.